I call the meeting to order and we're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the founding of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna start off the meeting with public comments from the floor. And these are agenda items only two minutes per speaker. Yes?
My name is John Gasco. I'm the new director of the Syracuse Turkey Creek Township Public Library.
Oh.
Nice to meet you all. And I wanted to say thank you to you for having our board member Diana Clark on the agenda tonight. So speaking about the agenda item, the library board was really supportive of the public library here in Syracuse. And if it weren't for great board members, we wouldn't have a great public library. So thank you.
Thank you for introducing yourself.
She's still healing, trying hard.
Ever.
Our best.
Will do.
No. Did you just get started?
Yeah, this is the beginning of my second week. The last night was my first board meeting. And my door is always open. If y'all have any questions, please come and see me.
You can miss the drive?
No, I am not. I love fifteen minutes. It's best.
That's awesome. Anyone else? We're gonna move on to approval of the minutes. We can do first through the nine sixteen and then the nine eighteen.
I'll move to approve September sixteen and September eighteen. Oh, there are two different agenda items.
Yeah.
Okay, sixteen.
Do we have a second?
Yes. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the regular meeting minutes all in.
Aye.
Passed.
I'll make the same motion on September eighteen. I was not there.
I think you could still.
You could still. You are still able to vote.
Okay. So can I second?
You can second. Anybody can move a second.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the minutes. And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Then Virginia, do I sign?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, can I just sign that one? Is that okay? I'll sign this one. I guess that one goes in my back. Now we'll move on to agenda number six, approval please.
I'll move to approve time's nine eighty-eight. Remove eleven. One three. Yeah. Eleven twenty-three.
Eleven twenty-three.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the claims. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have an agreement. It doesn't look like we have to take any. Open on?
The OCR agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, you do have to approve that. I don't think I was ready for last one either.
Okay.
So you do have to prove it. It is a standard agreement which provides for OCR. That's provide for OCR. Provides for.
Capishment.
Yeah, I couldn't think of the acronym. Thank you, Bill.
The OCR is in here too.
MACOG to provide the administrative services for management of that grant and that project. The language is the same as every other agreement that MACOG sends out to every other organization in the US or every other town or municipality. I'll move to approve the. Yes, I'll move to approve the agreement for professional grant administrative services. And to be signed by. Yes, our vice president. Yep, so you can sign it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bill. We have a. Motion and a second for the agreement for professional services and all in favor? Aye. We have on the agenda just a gateway sign discussion, and I wish David was here for this discussion. Brett, do you have anything you wanna add about the gateway signs?
Well, I was, yeah.
Beautification committee?
I just would like to speak in support of those signs as designed from the gentleman who has his company, marketing company, and I believe Muncie, and then lives here at the lake. The entryway signs widely are an expense, obviously, but they're really beautiful entryway signs. Does our community a fitting salute and tribute to Syracuse and the lakes and what our community means to our county and our tourism region throughout northeast Indiana? And so the chamber is in full support of those designs as a source of community pride even as you enter Syracuse from the north and the south. So I just wanted to let you know that the chamber is fully behind the entryway signs as designed.
Do we have a discussion this time?
I. I'm not committed to the both signs. I think I'd like the way the north sign looks if they rehapped or whatever they brought up. I think it looks nice. I can see some reason on the south side that it might be more visible. But I also think that maybe the gateway sign discussion should be a full five-person discussion.
And David. Probably should be here.
Yeah. And so maybe I would move to table that till next month.
Yeah, and it just says discussion.
Yeah.
It doesn't say.
It's just a not agenda item, so I don't know.
Well, I think.
I know they're expensive, but.
Yeah, we have to. I have to. Expensive is the word. I mean, spending a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on signs of this nature, especially with the cutbacks that are coming through less tax money coming down. It'd be very hard for me to vote for it. I'm Paul. I like the one on the north. I know it's old, but I like it. I look at other communities around and they have the standard rectangular signs that say, Avenue, Green, Ocean, whatever. And I just can't see spending that kind of money at this time.
I have been on a beautification committee with David and Brett's on it, and Patricia's on it, Michelle, Kipshu. I didn't tell people, well, anyway, yeah. And. I. I don't, I think it would be a good thing for our town. That's just my opinion. I know they're expensive, but if they last decades, then you can get your money out of them. I know we're spending a lot of money on other things that people don't really see, and those things are important. But I think it's, just my opinion, I think they would be an asset for our community. But I do think we should have everybody here and also hear from David. So anybody has anything else, just move on.
Okay.
Okay. We have in front of us. We need to appoint Diana Clark. If the boards like to, to the library board, and that's what John was speaking about.
Well, she seems to be very happy here. She's obviously done a good job. John would like to make the nomination to add Diana Clark to the library board or continue her on.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept Diana Clark for appointing her to library board for Syracuse. All in favor? Is that where you want me to sign, Virginia?
Yeah, on work, yeah.
So now we have our second public hearing for the 2026 budget. And I have to open that, yeah, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to open that. Twenty twenty-six budget hearing. At this point, do we have any comments from the community too? Any comments from the board? So then we vote on this tonight, Virginia?
Yeah, and you have to sign it.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance for resolution appropriations and tax rates.
Six, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill. We have a motion and a second. For the ordinance or resolution for appropriations and tax rates for 2026. All in favor? Aye. Approved.
Yes.
To be all signed. We're gonna move on to the Commonwealth Engineering Report.
Robin, is that Brett? Yes, good evening. Thank you. I'm Robin Matthews with Commonwealth Engineers. Jeremy's at a conference this week, so. But I mostly do transportation engineering work for Commonwealth, so it's probably appropriate that I'm here. Jeremy did want me to mention that on the water project there at, they had their fifty percent design review of this town. And so they're moving towards ninety percent completion on their design work on the water project. So for the road projects, we're using the CCMG program within that. It came out early today and observed progress on Boston Street, this year's project. And then I also have for your review and approval, a task order to do the design work and assistance with bidding and construction engineering and in-depth coordination for next year's project. Hopefully you have that in front of you, the roads that the town is looking to do a resurface at a minimum. Some of these have a little bit more involvement. Kern Road, we're gonna do a little widening at the curve. Oak Street from Portland to Railroad, Pittsburgh from Walnut to State Road thirteen. Front Street from Railroad to Chicago Street, I'm sorry, Railroad Tracks to Chicago Street. Henry Street from Huntington Street to Front Street. Harrison Street from State Road thirteen to the dead end. North Shore Drive from Long Drive to the East Town Limit. Palm Drive from Parkless Drive to Lakeside Drive. Walnut Street from Baltimore to Chicago Parkway Drive from Carol to Henry. Carol Street from State Road thirteen to the dead end, and then various alleys as well. So what's included in our scope, as I was starting to mention, the hourly assistance for the application, which Mark and I were just discussing that. He's gonna handle that for the most part, but will assist as needed. We've got quite a bit of survey work to do for the widening on Kern. We also have to identify right-of-way on Kern there being some county limit involvement. We need to make sure we do everything in the appropriate right-of-way for that. And then there's preliminary design, final design, bidding assistance, put the project out to bid, and then an hourly construction engineering phase as well to assist. Again, Mark and Paul do a really good job with that, so our involvement tends to be minimal, but we need to be involved a little bit so there's some hourly in that phase. And then the schedule is in here as well. It's just kind of as needed to get the project done by the timeframes required by NDOT and so that you can build the project next. Construction season, which will be next summer. Are there any questions for me on any of it?
Just like a little more.
Yeah.
Indeed.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and NDOT has increased the percentage that they pay. So this year it was at seventy-five percent to your twenty-five. Next year, or this one will be submitted for this month, they'll be matching at eighty percent. You'll only be paying twenty, so you're getting a little more thanks for your buck.
Mark, is there any of this the city could do themselves?
We are.
You've done all this? This is just.
We'll do quite a bit of that, but they'll be available on call if I need help. So that we won't be billed if I'm doing the work.
So this total that's in here is not to exceed total?
Correct.
Worst-case scenario.
Yeah, and I move to approve the task order. Submitted.
Hundred and forty-two thou- hundred and forty-two thousand, six twenty-five.
Yeah, for amount not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
And again, to be signed by the vice president.
I'll second it.
Excuse me. We have a. Recommendation and a second, so for the task order?
Yes.
That Robin just kinda outlined for us, and it was in your packet. All in favor? Aye. Do you have anything else to share with us? Thank you. Virginia, did David leave anything except anything different than what's in the packet? Did you have, I don't know, your questions about David's packet? Or I guess we'll have to check with him when he gets back.
I have no questions.
We'll move on to police.
All right.
Jim.
Is there any questions over my report?
I don't have any.
I didn't hear that. All right. You didn't get it?
Didn't have it.
Oh, no questions. Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
General, the two thousand eighteen police car, is that your next car to be replaced in that group?
Car nine, yes. That'd be the next one up.
Which car?
Which car, nine?
Yeah, nine with a hundred and two thousand, four hundred and fifty-six miles. Car ten is our spared car. What about two? Why is nine D four two? Two is one of the pickups. And it's, it seems to be going well still. Okay. But the cars, there's once we've been having, getting frequent issues with, now that they're getting up there in age. We've replaced, I think, three furnaces this year, or like in last year.
Is this for next year? You're replacing this next year?
Yeah. And then possibly looking at car five. It's. Just running at, uh, ten years old. Yeah, the pickups, they seem to be doing a little bit better. I mean, they're not, it's the detectives and me, Detective King and I drive it. So they seem to last pretty well. So in all, you're proposing, or you're going to propose in the future that the car number nine be replaced? Yes. For vehicle, I should say. I have no other questions.
No, neither.
Only other thing I have is the two thousand twenty-six terminal service data agreement with the county for approval of it for five thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-five cents. That's the yearly. Agreement for us to access the equipment to access NCICIDEX and report. Our computers. I'll move to approve the interlocal agreement between Casasco County and the town of Syracuse for amount not to exceed five thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-five cents.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thanks for the interlocal agreement.
Other than that, that's all I have as far as police ADA, no complaints or stuff.
Parks doesn't. It's here. They're always busy this time of year. I have stuff going on. Do you have any questions I can ask you, John? And then we'll go to public works. Martin?
Any questions on my report? Probably seen a lot of activity around town the last month.
I was just reading all the stuff back here about. Whatever company is in this factory.
Have you had a funding with us?
Yeah.
Of course. Part of the job.
Yeah.
In December twenty twenty-three and January twenty twenty-four, we were working with Burmier Midwest to get a Vactor trailer for the street department. It's for hydroexcavating, lots safer than running a backhoe in many circumstances. Perfect for putting in a sign place. So we, it's one of our most used pieces of equipment, existing trailer. So in twenty twenty-three, we. Agreed to a purchase from Burmier, and they still have not come through with that machine. So their communication skills are lacking.
Where are they out of?
Portland. Look like me. And so we have called many times, Paul Hoffman and I have reached out many times to get the status of this machine. We've been put off. They raised the price on us in the middle of the agreement. So. Two weeks ago. Three weeks ago, I told them they can keep their beautiful machine. So Paul had looked, had been looking extensively for a unit that would not require a CDL. And he found one that is actually a self-contained truck, very similar to the Vactor truck that the sewer department uses. This is a self-contained unit, described it. And because of that, it's lighter than a truck trailer combo, which has not required a CDL driver. So that big plus for the town there. So my request is, since I have vacated the PO, liquidated the purchase order for the original piece of equipment, we have that money available. However, this machine, because it is a truck, it's more expensive. The difference is five fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars. So I would, I would request to use the encumbered money for the original purchase plus the fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars from new street equipment, come for forty. We have a balance of a hundred and forty thousand dollars there. So for a total of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars, we get this machine for pat.
And how soon can you get that machine?
Two weeks.
Okay.
It is a demo.
Anyone waiting two years?
It's a demo. They've had it in town. They will give us a new machine warranty on it. Our crew has actually ran it and actually used it to see if there was something that we were interested in. Now fill them up with it. So my request is for two hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars from Brona equipment. Just for question, did you have a signed agreement with them for a hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and seventy? They violated the terms of that agreement by putting in the top for almost two years. I mean, I'm just wondering if you could have enforced that.
Well, you still can.
But I mean, I know you said that this is a better deal all in all, but.
It is.
If they signed an agreement that said they'd provide something for a hundred and eighty-six, I think they probably stuck with that agreement.
It's not even built yet.
Yeah, well, the thing is, if you enter a contract with somebody or whatever I enter might be, and they've reached the contract, which is fair to say they've reached that, you have to go buy it from another supplier at a higher price. Your damages are the difference between what you contracted with them originally and the higher price, which if I'm following your math, seems like it's about fifty-two thousand bucks.
Fifty-two thousand five hundred.
Yeah.
For the information.
Right, well.
It's an upgrade.
I, you've got to purchase what might be available out there. So in theory, you could pursue them contractually for that if you decide if you want to, I don't know, hire an attorney or file a lawsuit. You'd have the opportunity to do that. Whether you want to do that for that kind of money, I, I don't know.
It's a discussion we can have.
Yeah.
Coming up. But you have to get, but that wouldn't keep us from approving.
Oh, and it keep you from doing this at all?
No.
We're actually coming out ahead.
Yeah, well, then I make a motion to. I guess I'll allow you to spend up to two seventy-nine thousand five hundred for this demo hydro spade quote and for delivery of this vehicle in the next two weeks. I'll say three.
Say three. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I think I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion for the demo hydro spade quote. And all in favor? We have a second.
Thank you. And that's all I have unless there's questions. Oh, yes, you have been presented with the twenty twenty-six water and water budget. And if there's any questions on that, I would be glad to answer, because we have shifted funds around and kept the increases to an absolute minimum. Yeah.
I didn't really have any questions. I don't know why you guys did.
I looked it over and I thought the increases were very reasonable as well. Probably totally in line with the cost of living that we all, we have to endure.
Do we have to approve the waste water?
You could, I do.
And the water?
Waste water, water.
I'll move to approve the. I'm moving to approve the waste water and water. Two thousand twenty-six proposed budgets. I'll second.
All in favor?
Okay, now that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Mickey?
You guys have any questions around the report? The only thing coming before this council is we need approval to purchase a firefighter turnout here up to five thousand dollars from Conway Shields. That will come from the two thousand twenty-five equipment budget. It's for a new firefighter that we hired. As you know, I'll be retiring at the end of the year, so somebody else will be coming there, and so we've already moved forward with that. So we need approval to purchase here for this term.
How much was it?
Up to five thousand dollars from Conway Shield.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have up to five thousand dollars of firefighter.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, yes. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
All I have is, you have anything else?
Thank you, Mickey. Virginia?
I don't want to have anything.
I saw the information from November meeting.
Yeah. Oh, and then the ordinance for twenty-five fifteen additional appropriation that we go to review and that it will be advertised between this weekend and that weekend, and you can sign it the next weekend.
We don't have to do any, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. That's what this is. Jay?
Only thing Dave asked me to bring to you to make sure that you've already taken care of, which is the MACOG agreement.
Oh, okay.
Other than that, nothing.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments from the floor on non-agenda items? Thank you.
Forgot to mention, we do have Battalion Chief Robert Tinkie will be retiring at the end of this month, October the thirty-first. And we will have a retirement open house for him at our Station One on November the seventh, which is a Friday, from four to seven P.M. He's been with our department for thirty-five years.
Mickey, what was his name again?
Robert Tinkie. He's Battalion Chief.
Four to seven?
Four to seven P.M. at our Station One, yes.
Can you remind us?
I can. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, this is. Oh, the business. I'll shoot to a charm.
Yeah, I'm ready.
I'll shoot to a charm in a second.
Yes.
Virginia, where are you? I'm signing this in the.
It's a spelling question. So it's not a big battery.